Okay, so I'm gonna bring to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today's Tuesday. What is today? February 20?
Third.
Twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Thank you, Holly.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Oh, yeah. Start over. We need to call to order regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today's Tuesday, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. And what do I do with my agenda? Okay, I'll just have to wait up. Okay, so let's start by doing a pledge of allegiance and I will share my screen. Okay, all who can please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thanks, everybody. Okay, somebody, if you have the agenda, just keep me on track. I thought I had it printed out, but I think the next item is roll call. Okay. So if you are with us, please indicate so. Holly Bem.
Here.
David Blumey, he'll be back. Aaron Levitt Smith.
Here.
Craig McCormack.
Here.
Alan Needham.
Here.
Bill Rice is here. Rich Cortez. Yep, you're here, right? Yep, gotcha. Julie Eaton.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we have a full commission again this meeting, which makes me very happy. But that does mean that our alternates will just maintain their roles as alternates today. All right. And then next, I believe, would be a review of the minutes of our January twenty-sixth meeting. Okay, Ellen, as Secretary. Take us through that, please.
Yeah, meaning of January twenty-sixth, page one, lines one through fifty-one.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
I just have a question. Line forty-two. It says, "which spoke to the homes that are assessed or valued at or under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand."
Assessed isn't right.
Right, I think it was, I think the comment.
Sold. Those are sold.
Sold, okay, so let's change.
I think that's right.
Let's change the term assessed or valued at. We're gonna say homes that are sold.
Homes that sold for.
Homes that sold. How about homes that were sold at or below two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had on that page.
Okay. Good pickup. All right, page two, that's line fifty-two through one-on-one.
Nothing for me, no?
Yeah.
I didn't see anything either. Okay. Last page?
I didn't see anything. I thought the minutes were really well done.
Yep. I did.
Okay. Good.
Great job, Amanda, thank you. And with one small amendment, I make a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, as amended.
I have a second.
Bill made the motion. Aaron seconded. All in favor of accepting the minute, or approving the minutes as amended, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next, we have a six to zero to zero unanimous vote. Thank you. All right. Okay, here, I'm gonna go by memory. I think the next item on our agenda was the receipt of a re-subdivision application. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So. Mike, do you have anything to say there on this one?
Yeah, so this is a re-subdivision under state statute. It triggers automatic public hearing. The public hearing has been notified for your next meeting. So really, this is, it's on your agenda because legally, the application has been received by statute. But we really have little to discuss tonight until their next meeting, when the public hearing opens. But it's a two-lot re-subdivision.
On East Wheat Hog, right? Mike?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it, I'm just curious, where, is it, is it between like?
There's a map he sent us.
I know, but let me ask my question, please. So is it between Flammig Farm and River Road? The map, it didn't have any specifics when I went and looked at the map. It was, it showed going up the mountain and unless I did.
So Erin, I think you meant to say, what's the other farm on East Wheat Hog, not Flammig?
It's Rosedale.
Rosedale?
Yeah, Rosedale, thank you.
So it's more like. Go ahead, Mike.
This is along the eastern side of East Wheat Hog Street as you're driving towards one-eighty-five. It'll be on the right-hand side, kinda kitty-corner from Rosedale.
Okay, thank you.
You know where the tomato field is? For Rosedale, Erin?
Probably, I don't.
Across the street.
Yeah, it's across the street.
Oh, okay. I just couldn't, from the map, it just showed the whole thing. And I was like, well, where, I just didn't have a, and I didn't have time to ride by today.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that, though.
All right, then, go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, when you say a two-lot subdivision, that means we're turning one large lot into two by cutting it in two pieces? Is that what you mean by two lot? Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. And in this case, this particular lot was part of a larger one that was, a piece was cut off since the approval of subdivision regs. So that's why it's considered a re-subdivision.
So that's what, when we hear the word, the first cut is free? That already happened?
Yeah, actually, we went beyond the first cut. A first cut occurred, a subdivision occurred, and now we're into resub.
Oh, okay.
So it would be, you know, technically, it would be the third or fourth cut of this parent lot that occurred.
Okay, then we're in, I guess we were in receipt of it as of it being on the agenda. So Mike, are there timeframes associated with the application?
Yeah, so statutorily, we have thirty-five, sixty-five days to open the public hearing, which has been extended to ninety under the executive orders by the governor, which we're in our statutory timeframe to schedule to open the public hearing at your next meeting. Then you have, once the public hearing opens, we have thirty-five days to close it. And after the public hearing is closed, we have sixty-five days to act. Any of these, these terminal times, the sixty-five, thirty-five, sixty-five, can be extended for sixty-five days first, but then an additional ninety days under the executive order by the governor. So, but I anticipate this is a rather straightforward application. I know the, we'll hear from the applicant at the next meeting. And if the commission has questions or concerns or wants to see more, we will have time to keep that public hearing open. But I would, I hold any comments till the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, let's, we can think about it.
And the neighbors, the neighbors within, the budding neighbors as pursuant to your regs have been notified, or will be notified, I should say, of going out.
They'll get the link to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question. Okay.
Mike, have you had a pre-planning meeting with the applicant?
In the sense that Brian told me he was filing an application, that's, that would be our pre-planning meeting on this one.
Okay.
So. We'll see what. Yeah, I'll reserve, I like to reserve my comments for the public hearing at this point.
Yeah, that's fine, understood. Commissioners, I was rereading the subdivision regulations and by definition, a re-subdivision is considered a subdivision for the purposes of our regulations. So theoretically, everything that's in there could apply to this application. Although when I was reading through it, you know, a lot of, a lot of the requirements have to do with a larger type of subdivision with more lots. So I encourage you to review the subdivision regulations and come prepared at the next meeting for questions for the applicant. Okay, so we probably shouldn't discuss this that much more because the discussion should occur during the public hearing. Okay, good. It actually feels good to have an application on the table here. Next on the agenda, if I remember correctly, was probably a continuation of discussion of workshop items that we came up with a little over a year ago. I remember we spent the last year, more or less, creating the Simsbury Affordable Housing Plan. That was our task for the year. And in that context, I'm gonna ask Mike, has that been presented to the Board of Selectmen? Has that opportunity happened?
No, that would, that would be going to their next meeting, Bill, with that one. I want to run that one change by you first. That we, that you discussed over email.
Which one? Oh, what was that? What did I say?
I don't recall. I think we wanted to add, you add something about the task force at the end on the chart.
Oh.
I'll make that.
Yeah, in the, in kinda like the summary of the action items towards the back of the plan, I didn't see a timeframe for establishing or considering the housing advisory committee.
Yeah, I'll add, I'll add a timeframe onto that. But that would be, you know, I'll wrap that up and that would be, we'll submit for their next meeting. The next board of selectmen meeting.
Yeah. Now, do you know if they approve it, let's say eventually it'll be approved, how does it get submitted to the state?
You know what's funny is that, you know, statute is a little vague on submission to the state. What I was gonna do is, I was calling the Department of Housing on an unrelated matter, and I was gonna talk to the commissioner there to say, you know, is it gonna, to, do you want me to submit it to your department or does this go to OPM and it's referred to you? Similar to how our POCD is filed, is forwarded to OPM once it's adopted.
Okay.
So I will handle that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, now, Mike, I didn't ask you this, but do you have that list of items that we came up with a little over a year ago?
Yes, I'm about to try to green-share that over.
Good, I'm glad you kinda anticipated my requirement tonight.
I'm sorry, I'm trying, let me try. Does everyone see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, I would say that we knocked off one and two at this point.
Yep, that's what I think, too.
Well, I mean, number two, that's amendments to the POCD that we're gonna have to go through a public hearing process, but we have language agreed to.
Right.
So your next thing would be number three, the sense of place. That was another hot-ticket item with the commission.
Wow, that has all kinds of new ramifications lately.
And I would caution you, with the current atmosphere at the General Assembly, some of the aspects of the, that's on this list may be taken out of the enabling statute of, for zoning, as you are well aware.
Yeah.
This, I think we should, if we're gonna have a conversation about this, we really, we should be very.
Up to date.
Yeah, I would say, I'm trying to say it in a very polite way. Be, just be mindful of, as you heard in some of, from the public, but also in other meetings, you know, what, what's, from a land use perspective, when someone hears character of the district or character of place, what does that mean to certain people? I know that this commission kinda defended it, saying like, in two thousand seventeen, we were not thinking the way we are in twenty-twenty-one. But also, I mean, everyone here had a clear, you know, vision of what it meant to be the character. You know, you were, I think, Erin, you did a great job explaining that to someone during one of the, one of the public meetings. Others had kind of indicated it, too. So just be, I think this is one we might, we might wanna be, have some gloves to be delicate on as we proceed.
You know, I had a conversation with someone about that just the other day. And they, they were like, well, that's not what you guys meant, right? When you, and I said, but it doesn't matter whether or not that's what we meant. It was perceived in a way, and if people perceive it, you know, it, it doesn't matter how we intended it to be. It's how people receive it. I mean, that's part of it. And so I know, I thought a lot about that after the forum, or listening forum, is when that happened. So when I read this now, I kind of cringe, just for me, because of the implications. And I'm wondering, given the climate and given that the town is putting for, or could be putting a task force together, do we just table the sense of place till the next time we do an update?
Couldn't we, couldn't we discuss sense of place and just make a list?
Isn't that what we talked about, that we would define it?
Meanings, just, I don't care if it's thirty words long, a list of things that sense of place means. Sidewalks, viewscapes, traffic, plantings, gardens.
There you go.
All the stuff that, when you drive into town, it looks like something. It never had any, any implication that I've ever heard in all the years I've been doing this as to who lives here, but what things are here.
Right. And things that it should be available to everyone who lives here.
I know.
Yes, that's a better way to put it, yeah.
Great. I agree with you all, and I think that's like Michael just said. I know, I tried to explain that, but I think it's a matter of, it's the wording. And I think we need to be careful on the wording, and so, but I like your idea.
Call it sense of place, which is a better term anyway, always was. So, and just list the things. When, and even if, you know, somebody told me years ago, I was at work, and they said, where do you live? And I told him, I said, it's nice there. And he told me what he meant by that. He drove over the mountain, and when he got down by the, by the river, he liked the way it looked. And he liked the bridge, and he liked the, at that time, it was Chard House on the right side. That's what he meant by, it's nice there. Okay, and I think that we should try our best to give a list of things that make it, in our opinion, it's nice there. I mean, if you like sidewalks, which we don't have, not really. If you like sidewalks, we're not talking about who's walking on the sidewalks. We're talking about the fact that you can take a walk.
But how would that?
You know, somebody started this. I, there was a group of some kind, and somebody brought this up, and it kinda caught fire that that's what suburbs mean when they say character. But I don't, if that's true, I've never seen any evidence of that anywhere, frankly. I'm not going to say it doesn't exist somewhere. Anyway, so if we stick with sense of place and just do our best to, even if it's the longest run-on sentence you ever saw. If we just made, because it's an important concept, I think.
But how, why are we, what, so what are we, what is our goal of updating the POCD in a sense of?
How about, how about to dump the word "character" and replace it with "sense of place"?
To eliminate misinterpretation.
Right, but I.
Yes, that's right, huh?
My question is, how, what are we updating in the POCD? Regarding it.
I think we should try and.
That's what I didn't understand.
Handle and sense of place and plug it into the POCD where appropriate.
Okay.
We have, Alan, we have a whole section called sense of place.
Yeah, it's page fifty-five.
And then in there, probably the word "character" shows up.
Well, yeah, but maybe we can do a better job saying what we mean by sense of place.
Eliminate any misinterpretations.
Yeah.
I think that's a noble, a noble statement, Holly. I'm not sure it's achievable.
Well, I agree with Alan that if we do a very thorough job of delineating exactly what we mean, then I believe it's doable. Know that we were all together working on this, and we all meant the kind of things Alan's talking about. We meant about making sure that this is a very enjoyable community for everyone in town and everyone that comes to town and everyone that shall.
Otherwise, I'm not willing to give up on the concept of that your community in part is defined by what it looks like, how it functions. You know, what is there to do?
A sense of place is also something, ladies and gentlemen, I am very proud of what has been accomplished between the Simsbury Free Library and the Simsbury High School in helping refine and establish a sense of place as an important event in the life of Martin Luther King.
Absolutely, that's part of it.
Put that in there. I'm very proud of that, and I think we should be proud of that.
First Church has a rich history that I don't think people understand very well. I mean, there's been a lot of stuff there. Harriet Beecher Stowe's son was pastor there once. I mean, it's.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, and so I'm saying that's sense of place, too. We have to include that stuff. There's a historic sense here.
Sense of place also means honoring our Native American past, too.
Absolutely, and as, and there's things we can point to with shame that took place. That's, that's part of the sense of place, too, because hopefully we've moved on from that and do better. Anyway, so I hate to give up on the concept because then it removes a very powerful part of the POCD. If somebody comes in and wants to build a, something that just really looks like a thumb sticking out of the earth instead of what we normally see in town, I'm just talking about the optics, that's just what it looks like. Then what do we say about it?
So Alan, the goal, and I think that's what people were talking about. The goal is to maintain and enhance the character of the community. And I think that's what people thought, the way it was interpreted. And I defended saying that wasn't our intent. So I think it's some of the wording that if we clean up, it wasn't about the sense of place. It was more about, I think, what Bill just said.
But that's what I'm saying, Erin. I'm saying if, and first of all, when we say people, I think it's a very small number of people that, I was stunned when I heard that interpretation of it. Never heard that, okay?
Right, I agree.
So, I know they aren't talking about sense of place, so let's make it sense of place.
Right, and take out character of the community.
Yes, that's what I said.
Right.
Be clear and remove things that are.
Have been, I think, inappropriately misinterpreted, but it's up to everybody to make their own interpretation, I suppose.
Well, and actually, it's really chapter seven.
I was just gonna say. I was gonna suggest also. Yeah, I was also gonna suggest reviewing, so look at section eight of the POCD, but also go into page forty-five, seven-point-one. That's another section where the sense of place and quality of life that contribute to the overall character of Simsbury is mentioned. And, but if you read, if you read what's in the charts there, it speaks to the points that were made at previous meetings. How do you get some of those things out of the charts to convey what you mean in later chapters? That could, as like Alan said, some people may misinterpret it. Because I will say, you know, I've worked in three communities, and I've, this community, I've never seen the, the dis, the character of the district ever weaponized by a land use commission, like what was suggested. If anything, this, this community is very, I have to, I have to give credit to everyone here. Very good at identifying, you know, the real reasons, what, what makes the character of this town and why everyone here lives in town, who cares about the town.
Can we maybe, maybe we could simplify this by just defining what is meant by the word "character" in this document?
I think we ought to deduct the whole word.
Yeah, I think we better remove it. If people wanna misinterpret it, let's take it out.
It doesn't deserve it.
Define it, say, as used in this document, what we mean by "character" is, one, two, three. Because it does have a meaning that you folks intended to carry in this document.
No question. But isn't there, didn't somebody propose a bill to remove references to character from town documents? Is that legislature?
There's, there's one proposal, and there will be a bill forthcoming of the a copy heads and rewrite of the zoning reorg statute eight dash two. So yeah, most likely, the character of the district is coming out of the enabling statute for zoning.
So let's just not fight that. Why bother? I mean, we can say what we mean better than by using the word "character," so that's what I think, anyway.
Yeah, I agree.
Until somebody takes.
Alan, are you gonna do the first edit? Are you signing up to do the first edit since you feel so strongly?
Hold on, let's let Craig make his comment.
Yeah, I'm gonna hear what Craig had to say.
I was just saying that, you know, that's fine, we remove character until such time as somebody objects to sense of place and kind of assigns some other meaning to that as well. I mean, why not just stick a stake in the ground and say, this is what we mean? And don't misconstrue it to mean anything other than that.
Because there may be legislation that takes it out of our regs, anyway.
So they're gonna regulate the word, the use of the word "character"?
It's been proposed, Craig, yeah.
It's been proposed, yeah.
Okay.
It's.
I know I did an unusual thing where I was, so I was there, now I'm in. Am I, am I a member in this, in this meeting, or am I out of this meeting?
Yeah, I hear you, Dave.
That's a question. Am I, was I recording as present and a member at this meeting, or am I supposed to be quiet?
No, no, you were, you were present.
Thank you. Then here's a point I'd make. I think that you can get people that can argue both character and sense of place. My sense is that the, the desire of some of the people who are making that point was that they wanted to know that Simsbury was willing to move off of the status quo, off of where it is today, to move to something different. And it seems to me that we're, we're trying to anticipate, which may not take place, the objections to these key words. But I think the most, to me, the most critical item is the, the the document has to have a sense that the Simsbury is willing to change, to move, to do things differently, to incorporate affordable housing. So I, I guess I hear the discussion here, and I'm not sure it's necessary.
Well, again, if you think about why zoning exists, why does it exist? It exists to have a community function and look a certain way. Otherwise, who needs, what's the, I mean, outside of environmental concerns and safety, who needs?
Well, we didn't have it until nineteen-twenty-seven.
That's right, and, and look what you, we're still trying to fix some of that stuff. I still like the idea of trying to define it, but I would argue that sense of place can include the people that live here. Okay? Increasing interest in a sense of place of a diverse community. Why can't you say that? I think, I think we all believe that. That's the amazing. I think, I think we all believe that. That's the amazing thing to me. But yet try and get somebody to believe it. But I think all of us believe that.
Alan, I agree with you. Let, let me make, let me make an example. My oldest son was in the coast guard. He lived down in Jacksonville's authority. And I'm sure some of you have been to Jacksonville.
Yep.
It's as if the people there never heard of zoning. There are strip malls everywhere, everywhere. If you can't go a quarter mile without another strip mall, and that's what all the highways are, it's the way it's done.
That's their sense of place.
That's their, that's their character and sense of place. And it's ugly, ugly, terrible. I went there and I said, they've never heard of zoning here. And maybe I'm, um, incorrect there, but it's just ugly.
Why can't we weave in diversity into sense of place? I mean, we may not see it now, but we want to enhance our sense of place. And I think we do. I mean, this isn't trying to make anybody happy. I think we really believe this stuff.
Yeah, I thi, I would, I would vote for, um, simplifying. And like an example, and not get too, too fancy, I think, um, but like seven point one, as Michael pointed out, you know, it's identify and protect the resources, sense of place and quality of life that contribute to the overall character of Simsbury. Why can't you just say, identify and protect, um, the resources that, um, contribute to a sense of place and quality of life in Simsbury?
What sense of place mean?
Yeah, I don't think you have to take sense of place out, but I'm just saying, you know, we-
No, 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 listen. What does it, what does it mean?
Simplify that statement by just saying that. And then it goes into, you know, preserving stone walls, burial sites, cellar, I mean, it goes in to explain what some of that is.
Cause so sense of place then means that it's a community that's got invisible walls around it to keep it the way it's always been. Isn't that our sense of, it isn't, okay? That's why I think you have to try and make some effort to say what you mean.
So you, you define, I'm sorry to-
Quality of life. I mean, that's what, yeah, you could take sense of place out, actually. I mean, that's what I'm saying. Simplify this. I, I don't think we-
Again, sense of place. And, um, anyway, just to get our point, Craig.
You actually, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. You, you actually, you define, uh, sense of place on page forty on the sidebar in the P O C D. And for those of you who don't have your P O C D in front of you, I'm just gonna read the definition. The concept of place is an abstract and def, defining it is elusive. However, you know it when you see it. A place is found in the organizational patterns of physical landscape, natural or built, i.e. ridge lines, uh, signature brownstone buildings, widening secondary roads, et cetera, and in preserved historical land use such as farms, factories, mills, et cetera. These patterns extend beyond the vis, the visual. It's more than just the way a town looks. Place is also manifested in, in the interaction between human and habitat. The organization patterns of farmstead, for example, includes the familiar house, barns, fields, but it also includes the experience of a farm, sounds of, of livestock, tractors, smells, and the history associated with the site. Perhaps, you know, it's a fan, same family owned for generations or renowned for organic, uh, produce. So I mean, you, you did, it's kind of-
I think that's good.
Right.
You set the bar right there. That's on page forty on the sidebar.
But it's on a sidebar. I'd like to feature it somewhere. Something that's really in your face and I'd like to weave in the concept of diversity.
Yeah, I, I think something we're gonna struggle with is that that definition doesn't capture any of the current thoughts for-
That's why I wanna weave in diversity.
You know, uh, my sense of place in Simsbury, does it include, uh, duplexes on Hot Meadow Street or, you know, uh, Quarter, Quarteraker Lot?
Yeah.
You don't think that's getting too in the weeds?
Well, no, he's not asking to say that.
No, 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 I'm just, that, that's a hypothetical. Yeah, I've been, I, you know, we've all been, uh, exposed to a lot of the, uh, comments that have been uh, made recently. Um, and there's a lot of legislation that's being proposed to overhaul the land use regulations in the hundred and sixty-nine towns in, in Connecticut.
So the, the definition Mike just read is really not bad at all. It's really pretty good, okay?
Does it, does it support any of the, the-
Current stuff. That's why I say weave into that something about diversity and the people that live here, the population. And, and don't put it in a sidebar. Put it where it's-
You know, Alan, we were pretty adamant when we first went through this, uh, to make sure we didn't use the word diversity.
Yeah, exactly.
Times have changed.
Really?
Could we say, as Alan said earlier, that it would be a, a, um, an, an improved or, um, um, modified uh, sense of place? And, and, and yes, I realize that that's, there's a lot, there's a, you know, the, what, what does that mean to be asked and argued a great deal too, but I, somehow we can communicate that. And, and I believe this document does do that. It's, it says, we're willing to change. We're willing to, to, to do some new things.
But it, the plan for the town doesn't include anything written, I don't believe, in the P O C D that talks about welcoming people into town, does it?
Does the P O C D, is, is that part of what the P O C D should have?
It's the plan of development. How can, how can, sure, it should, should say something about it. Sure. What, what other document is there that would address it?
I'm, I'm asking, Alan. I'm, I'm just asking. It's an, it's a, you know, we have it in here now. Do you want to put some? And then that, you're talking not a sense of place. That's what I'm saying. I think we have to focus this, cause it's, that's, I, I mean, unless you want to re, redo that whole sense of place to, to add something about welcoming and, you know, that makes sense.
Well, that, but that, that can be woven into a discussion of sense of place.
Right, that's, that's what I just said, but.
Okay.
Maybe something is simple to adding. I'm sorry, Holly, go ahead.
Uh, I did have a question. Um, I think Bill or, uh, Mike mentioned that we uh, deliberately excluded the word diversity in the P O C D. I didn't remember that.
No, I think-
Actually, I don't either.
That was, that was in the Affordable Housing Plan.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
My mistake.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but the comment, the comment came from when we looked at the P O C D and we said, oh, we don't want to include that word in the Affordable Housing Plan.
I was just gonna say, maybe doing something as simple as, um, adding uh, something in that part that, that, uh, that Mike pointed out, that, uh, you know, the sense of place also, uh, envisions, you know, welcoming environment that's welcoming to, you know, all, um, walks of life or what have you. Something real simple like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant by weaving it in. I don't know what to say exactly, but, um, a town that is open to all that, uh, would like to live here. Uh, you know, that's not good enough, but something like that. I, I think it's time to do something like that. And I, you know, still say, if we don't say something about it in the P O C D, what other document is there in town? We're going to put it on a sign somewhere?
Well, Alan, that's not that out, outrageous, you know, other, not towns, but other organizations are making it very clear that they, uh, you know, are, are, uh, open to, um, open and, and welcoming to, to everyone, but.
Yeah.
So you know what you could do? You could weave what Alan and Craig are talking about in the goal. You could change the goal for a sense of, or promote places with a sense of place. And that's where you could weave in what you're talking about, Alan and Craig, about diversity, inclusion, welcoming. So that you cha, I mean, maybe that's what needs to really be updated in that is the goal.
And featured somehow.
Have that goal statement be, be broader and more inclusive.
And, and more in your face. Someplace where you turn the page and there it is.
And there it is.
Hidden in a definition in the back somewhere or something.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I just-
You know, for a long, uh, for a long time, the plan of conservation and development was really geared towards, um, acquiring and ma, and, and maintaining open space.
Yep.
You know, that, that was the main objective, uh, at least the last two, uh, the last two versions. Uh, so, um, yeah, may, maybe times have changed a little bit and the, uh, uh, influences that we need to consider, uh, have changed.
Yeah, I do-
Yeah, I, I will, I, I, okay, I'm gonna, let me just extrapolate a little bit, you know, based on, uh, the, the, the theory, uh, that, uh, Alan has kind of, not theory, but the, the, the draft words that Alan put forward, uh, you know, generally we include, um, some examples of how that goal can be achieved. And, um, you know, then that, that would be something else that we have to consider.
I, I do think you'd have to change the title of chapter seven. Which is maintain and enhance community character.
Yeah.
I think you need to change that. And then you could go to goal and promote places with a sense of place. You know, you could add what Alan and Craig, I liked what Craig said. And then you could put, instead of it being a sidebar, Alan, your first thing in chapter seven would be what is a sense of place? And you could list this whole thing in a paragraph rather than a sidebar. And then go from there. I mean, that's, that's one way to, to do it. But that, chapter seven, you'd have to take a look at the, just the, the heading.
Yeah, it's gonna take some wordsmithing, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Erin. You don't want to say too much, cause then it's, gets lost.
Yeah.
Okay? But you have to say enough that it was worth the effort. Well, and I would love, I would love our town fathers be able to open up the P O C D and say, wait a minute. This is what we believe. It's right here in our plan.
That's true.
So right now, you know, I was reading, I was reading page, uh, forty under chapter seven, maintain and enhance community character. The bullet items on page forty are all related to physical items.
Right.
There's not, there's nothing about the human element.
Right.
And that word maintain is a little scary too, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't-
Grow.
I don't know how you maintain and enhance at the same time.
Yeah, cause you can, okay? Sure you can. So you got a nice colonial something or other in town and the thing you build next to it is another nice colonial thing. You enhanced it and maintained it at the same time. Don't like that, Bill. You don't play poker, do you, Bill? Anyway, it, I think we can come up with something reasonably good. I just think it's gonna be a pain in the neck to do it, but.
So Bill, oh, I'm sorry, Alan.
No, I'm done.
Do you, do you want, do you want us to take a stab at some of the wording and then be, I mean, I know we have the public hearing. I, I don't think the public hearing is gonna be that long next, in, in a couple of weeks.
Didn't this agenda talk about a workshop?
This is the workshop, Alan.
Oh, this is the workshop. Well, I think we'd probably have to devote a little more time in this. What I don't think works very well is that everybody go home and write their own version and we try and put it together. Never works. I've never, that's my opinion anyway. I've never seen that one.
I'd like to come back with something though, rather than try to-
No, I think, I think it's better to start with something.
Yeah.
And then pick at parts of it, but just have a framework to work on. I, I think-
Well, the, the framework, the framework is the existing P O C D in my mind.
Well, if you're gonna write some new text though, what I'm saying is that if we want to change paragraphs two and three, if each of us wrote a new paragraph two and three, we're not gonna get anywhere. We're just gonna be bumping into each other. Um, if we had a, some concepts, just a list of concepts, and we wove that into something and then tried to work on that, I think that's a little more efficient.
I think that, you know, uh, commissioners are probably, you know, caught a little flat footed at, at this point
Oh, yeah.
to, to make any, any, uh, decisions. So I, I would, I, I think what Erin was, uh, starting to say, and I, and I hope, uh, just cause it's what I agree with, is that we should probably, uh, have homework uh, for next meeting where we can all study chapters seven and eight. Uh, and then come prepared, uh, with comments. And Alan, to your point, I don't think we need to have anything written down at that point. You know, maybe, uh, if it be a particular paragraph or, uh, a set of bullet items that, uh, everyone is in agreement needs to be adjusted, okay, then we start, then we start the, the wordsmithing.
Yeah, I, I still think you could come in with a short list of things you think should be included, but, yeah. Try and stop me. Just go ahead.
Well, let's do that, okay?
Alan, Alan, chapter seven, I mean, I, just taking a look, I mean, though, Bill, you bring up a good point. It is all natural resources on page forty.
Yeah.
Which is interesting, you know, and again, I think it just shows you the mindset from five, six years ago where we were at, right? No big boxes, no more development, you know, and, um, so, I mean, at least-
Well, that's what you see, yeah.
Great, but at, at least we had the forethought to talk about affordable housing. I don't think we thought it would be as big as it is. But, uh, yeah, I like the idea. I'm just gonna go and make notes to see where in this there's words or phrases. Cause I, I don't think all of it's gonna be a total rewrite. I think it's just gonna be, in some cases, just
Insertion or something.
And, yeah, and updating.
Yeah. I hope it doesn't take a year like the affordable housing thing, however long that took us. What, geez.
I don't think it'll take that long.
No, hope not.
And then I, like on page fifty-five, the goal of promote place of sense with sense of place, you know, that, the goal in the blue, that could be totally reworked to, to get in what you and Craig were talking about. You could probably get all of that just by rewording that, that goal statement.
You willing, Bill? What do you think?
To revisit the goal statement?
Yeah.
Sure.
All the things we're talking about. So find some way to make it, uh, more current. Because if, if this bill succeeds and we have to remove the word character, we're gonna end up doing this stuff anyway, so.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing that, uh, I, I kinda paused a little bit on is, um, you know, if, if we start, um, adopting certain, uh, suggestions for, you know, changes in, in zoning regulations and things like that, um, I, I don't, I, I don't know if, if that's the majority, uh, feeling of, of the town. I, I just don't have a sense for it.
Yeah.
You know, um, so, but I guess that's why any change to the P O C D-
Has a public hearing.
For a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah, I, I, I'm sure that opinion in town runs pretty much the gamut. I'm not as sure here as I am in some parts of the country, but, um, yeah, it, it, some, some people would like to see an evolutionary change, some not so much, some revolutionary. I, I'm sure of that. So that, we just have to write something that's just in broad strokes what seems to make sense. We don't want to bend to the trend too much.
I like that, bend to the trend.
I just made that up.
Pilot, don't know it.
Yeah, and I, I also don't want to get in a situation where, um, you know, if, if a advisory committee for affordable housing is established, uh, they end up with different direction than what the P O C D, uh, you know, what our revised P O C D says.
Well, maybe they will, but there, you can bet your boots that's gonna happen.
Right. So do we, you know, the, then the question is, do we want the P O C D to be, you know, to support, uh, the advisory board's positions?
You mean, they go first?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, you know what I, I get that, but what I don't like about that is that I don't know what they're gonna author. Okay? And I think what they're gonna author might be influenced if we kind of clean up our act a little bit first.
Honestly, I don't think there'll be any, any, uh, any effect- Honestly, I don't think there'll be any 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 effect of the P O C D on their decisions.
You may be right. I don't know how that's
They'll either, they'll either, you know, take what's what supports the position and say, oh, it's in the P O C D. But if there's something that kind of goes in a different direction, they'll say, oh, the P O C D is an advisory document. So.
Oh, yeah. Well, they've always done that too.
Yeah, and and and
People build what they want. When they don't like what we say, it's just advisory and we're not going to take your advice. So.
Yeah.
But but I just want to remind everyone just that one other function of the P O C D, it's supposed to be a living document. So we are supposed to look at it. I mean, technically by statute, it's once every ten years, but you know, it's kind of our responsibility when, you know, times change that we revisit the P O C D, kind of like what the commission's doing. So even then, let's say a year from now, two years from now, we have it, we're in a different world. We have a totally different opinion about some of the things. Yeah, I mean, a responsible thing of the commission would say, we're gonna change the P O C D again. And it may not even be the the chapters we're discussing tonight. It could be infrastructure.
Yeah.
But it just, you know what I mean? But so you you're supposed to be kind of keeping it alive, keeping it keeping it current rather than just visiting it once every ten years.
Yeah.
I'm hoping we look at this and we don't have to go wholesale into with a chainsaw. We just find some some ways to be a little more current with just maybe a few sentences.
Well, and Alan, that's what I was saying. I was like, let's keep this simple because I don't
Well, it doesn't have to, well, but simple could be you don't do anything.
No, I don't mean that.
You're so basic. Yeah.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, let's not complicate it. You can go in and make some changes that are relevant without
Without writing new chapters. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, let's look at it that way. Okay, let's, you know, take the action to review section seven and eight with, you know, a kind of a visionary approach, considering what the what the what the current current environment is. And I think, you know, that that will show that this commission's not tone deaf to to reality and is responding to to, you know, the way the way things have changed.
Yeah, you know, if if the P O C D is taken seriously and somebody wants to have more affordable housing in town. Affordable housing is is an item for sale. And the salesman better be good because they're not going to sell it. And the way to sell it, in my opinion, is that you make it so affordable housing fits. It looks like other things here. It doesn't offend other things here. Instead of making it sound like, you know what we're gonna do? You know, you got an acre lot? We're gonna buy half of the acre and build a six-story building next to it. Okay, that's that's not the way to sell it. It's like shove it down people's throats. Say, you know, this this is a good thing. Having, remember the guys that talked about housing for college graduates, college students, people like that right out of school? This is, this is that too, for sure. Maybe it's mostly that. I don't know, but but to have more affordable units, smaller footprints, maybe no garages. That's an easier sell than some multifamily house on a lot that was really designed for one house to put two buildings.
Of course, we should give ourselves credit because we do have quite a bit of very, very low income affordable housing that has existed in this town for decades since I got here twenty some years ago. And most of the people don't even know it exists.
I think you're right. So also, though, this word affordable somehow. People are still confusing affordable by the statutory definition and by the common sense definition. Those are two different things. Okay, my house was barely affordable to me. Okay, but that's because of my circumstance. That's what made it affordable. And so that, I don't know, that word affordable is really a problem. I I think when most people are talking about affordable housing these days, they mean that people with lower incomes can afford to buy a house. I don't know what that has to do with eight thirty G.
Well, the problem is that almost nobody references eight thirty G Sunday. Hartford Current, I have it right here.
Yeah.
And it, yeah.
What did it say?
They claimed that we only had four four
Eight seven.
in Simsbury as affordable. And yet nowhere did they say, according to the arcane definition of eight thirty G. And as we pointed out in our meeting last week, in the price range of eight thirty G, twenty-six percent of all homes that were sold meet that affordable price. And yet there is nothing in eight thirty G would take those affordable homes
I know.
them more accessible for minorities.
Yeah.
In fact, it makes it worse for minorities because if you if you deed restricted, then the most expensive investment you have, you cannot
Get any
generational wealth to. I mean, it's and yet here they did. They quoted it in this
Holly, remember that the the purpose, the purpose of that article is not information. You know, it was, it's setting, setting the stage for the legislation that's being proposed.
Yes.
Well, it's a newspaper and I expected to have facts and I expect Connecticut Data Collective to either be competent or non liars. But either they're incompetent or they're liars because they
Yeah, they're
Quote
They're selling news.
Any definitions whatsoever.
Oh, Holly, I think that number of four point seven four is exactly what we have in our affordable housing.
And yet we state that it is due to this arcane definition that does nothing to increase minority participation.
That comment would not help the the point that the author was trying to make in the article.
The author is trying to say, oh, there's no affordable housing, where most people think affordable housing has to do with the of the of that, as people said, that people that people of lower means can afford it.
Mike, are you
What this is, is we have twenty-six percent of our stock that meets that price range but does not meet some other criteria and that in no way, shape or form helps minorities assess access to homes.
Hold on, please don't use that word. It you said it right earlier, lower income.
Well, this is all about, this article was a history of discrimination and how this is keeping minority, this whole point of this article was keeping minorities out and
But they were, they were right. When they talked about covenants, that's all true stuff.
Yeah, redlining, that 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 those are
It's all true stuff.
I'm referring to what they say about Simsbury. They're doing that?
No, no, no. It had, it happened in the past. It's not happening now.
Here?
Yeah.
Redlining?
There's no, there's no covenants associated with any land purchases for
Not since nineteen forty-eight, I think, is when they got rid of covenants.
Now, you know, redlining the maps probably don't exist anymore. Does it actually happen? Well,
Yeah. Say, Mike, is it ever appropriate to discuss Woodbridge and what's going on there? The proposal?
I mean, I I could, we could talk in in it's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
I mean, I I I let me just, I think Alan brings up a good point. If members are interested in that, there's an affordable housing application. It's in the, it's with the Woodbridge Planning and Zoning Commission. You should watch that. There's all of their meetings are on YouTube. You can, there are several articles and Haven Independent is probably a good source to get some articles on what is going on currently. This is, you know, it's it's kind of complicated. At the same time, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to talk too much about it because, you know, just in case some someone like that were to file an application that becomes an applicant before this board, I just I don't want to jeopardize the the objectivity of this board.
Sure.
But it's worth, like Alan said, it is worth reading. There are all of the documents are uploaded on to the Town of Woodbridge's website. So you can, you can see what what's there so far and give me a real, a real picture of both sides of the argument.
Yep. And that's a dramatic development, very dramatic.
Correct.
Okay, then.
Question, just one question to help me. Kind of, I'm just looking at this now. If you took out character, are there some words, synonyms that you would could think of that we could use?
If you if you just come up with a synonym, they're gonna say, well, you just came up with a synonym, synonym. I can't say that word.
Well, we could. I mean, that's why I'm asking, what would what would we substitute? So like if this, you know, it's just something to think about because I'm struggling with how to
I think I think you'd substitute a description of the notion.
Yeah, and and then I think your document gets too wordy because every time you do a description, there's so many places that they have character. So how could you do that in, you know, without making
I don't know. I guess we'd have to work on that. But yeah, don't be afraid of getting a little wordy because somebody who's out for your hide gets bored halfway through it.
Yeah, I just, it's just something to think about because I'm I'm sitting here like looking at some of these pages going, wow, this is going to be hard to come up with ways to substitute some of this wording.
You can always leave a lot of what it says and then just reference, see page nine, and then page nine, let you have it.
So, Aaron, what what's the difference between character and I thought we had talked about using sense of place and defining sense of place?
We already do that, but it's you have both sense of place and character.
I think it's redundant. I mean, well, to you, what is the difference? What does character add that sense of place doesn't define?
Its original intent. There isn't any difference.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
You could, you could say maintain and enhance sense of place instead of character. You could use, yeah, that's one way to do it.
And then you refer to a place that discusses sense of place. You don't do it on five pages.
Right, right. You just make that instead of doing it a sidebar, Alan, like you get more.
Okay, why don't we take some time in the next couple of weeks to to look it over? And Mike and Laura, if you could please include, you know, the workshop item again on in the next agenda.
Yeah, it'll be after the public hearing.
Right.
Oh, good. We'll all be fresh. Good.
Mike, any other correspondence that we should be aware of?
No, you don't. You don't have anything else. Just a reminder, for those of you who didn't get a chance, the Connecticut Bar Association will be having their their biannual or, I'm sorry, yes, biannual meeting, legal update. It's on, it's gonna be held on Zoom Saturday, March sixth. I I think if if you contacted Laura already, we've signed you up for the meeting. We're hoping to get the the meeting materials prior to it. If anyone last minute would like to join, please email Laura tomorrow so we can try to get you onto the list. I know that some members here have attended this in the past. It is a fantastic conference. It is a real comprehensive training for land use commissioners, not just for functions and roles of the planning commission, but it's all the land use commissions they go over.
Good.
So. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mike. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alan makes a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Craig seconds the motion. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously and we are adjourned.